Please note this meeting is going to be livestreamed and to disclose your peculiar interest in the general nature thereof, none. We're going to have a presentation this evening by Sergeant Kelly Woodrow and Linda's there. And you can begin, I guess.
Oh, thank you.
I ran out of words.
Well, good evening, everyone. So, thank you for having us. So, my name is Kelly Woodrow and I'm a sergeant with the OPPE Police Bureau and with me is Linda Davis. She's also a municipal police specialist with the Bureau. So, we are going to be discussing the OPPE billing model tonight. The presentation takes probably about forty minutes, give or take. I do ask that I will try to get through the presentation, then if you have any questions after, I can address any questions that you have after, but I assume a lot of questions will get addressed during the presentation, so we will begin. So, the OPPE is a division of the Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services, the largest operational ministry in the province with presence in every community across Ontario. As Ontario's provincial police service, the OPPE has a unique mandate. So, in addition to delivering frontline policing services to more than seventy percent of Ontario municipalities, the OPPE has provincial policing responsibilities as outlined in the Police Adequacy and Effectiveness Standards, which is OREGs 399 Police Service Act. The obligation of the municipalities to provide core policing services and the methods by which municipality may opt to have these services delivered are outlined in adequacy standards. So, if a municipality does not provide policing services by one of the methods outlined, the OPPE is required to provide police services to this municipality. The five core policing services to be delivered in Ontario are, as you can see, crime prevention, law enforcement, assistance to victims, public order maintenance, and emergency response. So, the OPPE is one of the largest deployed police services in North America. We have over eight thousand employees, fifty-eight hundred uniform, and twenty-four hundred civilian. Over one million, we police over one million kilometers of land. We police over one hundred and twenty-seven thousand kilometers of roadways, over ninety thousand kilometers of the waterways. We have five provincial communication centers across the province, and we operate on what's called an integrated service delivery model. So, we'll get into that later on in the presentation to explain that one fairly. We have one hundred and sixty-three detachment locations across the province, over forty-five hundred vehicles, including ATVs, snowmobiles, and boats, and we police three hundred and twenty-three of the four hundred and forty-four municipalities across the province on a cost-recover Our 2016 annual report provides statistics on the OPPE in numbers. So, as you can see here, some of our numbers, we have responded to over seven hundred and fifty thousand calls for service, ninety-eight point six percent of residents felt very safe or safe, over two hundred and twenty-one thousand hours of specialized services, ninety-six point seven percent of calls received by OPPPCC were answered within the first twelve seconds or less. We've investigated twenty-nine homicides and five point, over five point four million police service hours were provided to municipalities. So, what you can see here is our provincial policing budget. So, in the middle there, our budget is one point one-two billion dollars, and you can see the split here. So, sixty-five percent is to the provincial and specialized responsibilities. That is provided to the municipality on a no-cost recovery, and the thirty-five percent, so the three hundred and ninety-five point two million, is the section where we cost-recover from the municipality. So, I'm going to further go into that later on, and I'm going to break it down even further. So, this is the sixty-five percent. So, this is the provincial specialized responsibility, which accounts for the seven hundred and twenty-eight point two million dollars. So, this means that the OPPE provides these services to the municipality at a no-cost recovery. As you can see, so the OPPE will provide the traffic safety, investigations, intelligence, specialized response teams. So, for example, traffic safety. So, you get a call on a highway, okay? So, an MVC on a highway, OPPE responds to that, that's a no-cost recovery, okay? So, that's a provincial resource. So, this just kind of outlines what is cost recovery and what's not. So, provincial specialized responsibility, no-cost recovery. So, along with that is the auxiliary policing, community safety, the unincorporated territory, and the indigenous policing. Then move on to the second, which is the municipal policing resources. So, this is the money that we have to recover. This accounts for thirty-five percent or the three hundred and ninety-seven million dollars of the budget. This is provided to the municipality on a cost-recovery basis. So, this is your detachment staff and support positions. Municipalities are billed for the portion of the detachment and support positions required to meet their service demands. So, just to kind of go into the OPPE service delivery. So, our detachments within the OPPE operate on what's called an integrated service delivery model, which means they provide policing services to contract and non-contract, so Section 10 and 5.1, in order to meet provincial policing commitments. So, officers in detachment are not designated as municipal or provincial officers. They'll work in multiple locations during a shift, so they could be called out of the municipality, or a lot of resources could be called in. Detachments often share resources with officers, providing support for major incidents in neighboring detachments or when there are staffing pressures. The OPPE utilizes what's called DAR, which is a daily activity reporting system, to record the time and location an officer works. The OPPE accurately tracks service provided to municipalities, ensuring that they do not pay for those provincial resources or obligations that we sloped in our previous. Okay, so let's get into numbers with the billing model. So, just to give you a little background on our new billing model, so the previous model resulted in wide variations per household, so we had some municipalities that were paying as low as thirty-five dollars a property, and we had other municipalities paying eight hundred and ninety-five dollars per property. So, the purpose of this new billing model was to make it more fair. So, what happened was in 2012, the Auditor General directed the OPPE to review the billing process, and in this review, they recommended three things to happen. So, what they wanted to see was to make the new billing model more transparent. They wanted us to address the wide variance in prices and consider a phasing in so as to give municipalities time for those municipalities that were paying more, and to make the model more understandable for people to break down. So, after extensive communication, community engagement, planning, and clear direction from the Auditor General, the current OPPE model was developed and took effect on January 1st, 2015. The OPPE and the ministry engaged extensively with other municipalities, including AMO, during the development of the model, so that municipalities were involved. And the billing model only is applicable to municipalities who were already being policed by the OPPE as of January 1st, 2015. So, any municipality who comes over after that time has to go into what's called a transition period, which is a three-plus-year transition period in which we have to gather the data in order to put them into the billing model. So, the billing model actually only affects those who were before. Okay? So, the OPPE currently provides policing services to three hundred and twenty-four municipalities, one hundred and forty-six on contract, and one hundred and seventy-eight on non-contract, and is applied in accordance with OREGs 26714 of the Police Service Act. So, this billing model is based on the rationale that all municipalities should pay an equitable share for the provision of policing services as outlined in the Police Service Act. The list of legislative policing requirements in the Police Service Act and OREGs adequacy standards is extensive and requires a substantial investment in staffing, equipment, training, and training. So, the base service level of infrastructure, supervision, administration, and frontline policing is necessary to provide adequate policing and ensure general safety of the municipality. Municipalities must have trained and properly equipped police officers available at all times to respond to calls for service, and there is a cost associated to this availability. Proactive policing activities such as general patrol, traffic enforcement, this is your ride, your crime abatement strategies, are all provided to the municipality and can reduce or limit occurrences. A fair billing model should take into account all police functions and legislative responsibilities. So, this is what I talked about previously with the five-year phase-in. So, as part of the implementation of the billing model, and due to the fact that there are wide variances in municipalities, some paying a really low price and some paying a high, what this billing model does is gives those municipalities time to catch up and make it more even. So, if you were paying thirty-four and the other was paying eight ninety-five, it did make you automatically jump to the main price. It did it gradually in stages per year. So, our increases for 2015 were capped at forty dollars per property. The years 2016 to 19 are capped, forty dollars per property, plus a cost growth amount to account for the differences in salary and benefits and the ODOEs. For 2018, the cost growth amount is seven hundred and eighty dollars per property. In cost recovery, so this new billing model, it doesn't change the total cost recovery for policing services, it just shifts the allocation, so it just makes it more even. So, as with the previous recovery process, municipalities continue to recharge the actual salaries and benefit costs to detachment officers that service all OPPE police municipalities, and the municipal cost recovery formula is used to recover the cost of specific support services and the ODOEs. The OPPE will ensure that municipalities do not pay for provincial policing obligations, so the provincial obligations performed are tracked through our DAR system to make sure that you're not being charged for them. So, this is just kind of a look for you guys, just to see how the process happened with us. So, the OPPE, this is the new billing model in the center here. So, the OPPE met with and coordinated with the Police Service Act, other municipal-related legislations, all of the three hundred and twenty-three Ontario municipalities that we police, other communities, municipal associations, MPAC, government ministries, and the Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services, and together we created this new billing model. And as I said before, the purpose of this is to make it more fair and more transparent. And the way we made it more fair, as I've said this before, is we made it more streamlined. So, we brought the variance in prices to a more common price, a more, what's the word I'm thinking of?
Even?
Even, thank you. And as far as the transparency, so we speak about the billing model at conferences, webinars, calls for service billing summaries, in meetings, it's on our OPPA website under billing model. It's out there for anybody to look at, anybody to calculate themselves. This makes it more transparent for everybody. This again is just a slide that just shows fair and transparent. So, the calls for service billing summary was provided to municipalities to make it more fair and the transparency, there's police service board reports through our CRS, the Integrated Core Defenses Network, records management, just to show what happened, the police service board reports allow us detachment commanders to report to these police services boards, CPACs, councils, legislative responsibilities. Okay, so this is very hard to see. I don't know if it's any easier to see on your, no, it's worse. So, I'm just going to kind of skim over this because the next couple of slides are going to go deeper into this to kind of explain it. However, what you can see, now I'm just trying to circle. So, right here, your FTEs, that's how many FTEs are provincially. So, you have twenty-two, I can't even see it, twenty-two point...
Twenty-five point two-nine.
Thank you. Inspectors across the province, twelve staff sergeants, two hundred and twenty-two sergeants. So, this is just giving you a broad number of FTEs. The next one is what percentage do you pay for in your base services? Well, you pay a hundred percent for inspectors. You pay a hundred percent for staff sergeants operationally and staff sergeants, and fifty-seven percent sergeants, constables, part-time sergeants. So, over here on the other side is just a calculation. Or, sorry, that's the price, price of one inspector. Okay, so you're going to do the calculation of that times your twenty-five, it's going to give you this price. Okay? So, it's just a matter of calculation. But in general, what this tells you after doing the calculations, if you scroll to the bottom, you can see the prices. Okay, so the total base services and calls for service is your, Linda, can you yell it out?
Three hundred and sixty-eight million.
Divided by the number of properties that the OPPE police gives you your base cost. So, your one ninety, one hundred and ninety-one dollars thirty-five cents, that's the base cost. That's the cost that every property in your municipality will pay no matter what. Okay? So, let's go deeper into it. Okay, so the first slide that I showed you, the thirty-five percent of the cost recovery, this is going to be a breakdown of that. So, your base services, which we just talked about, the hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents. So, this includes the cost of fully trained and well-equipped, available police officers performing proactive. Okay, so this is to say that if at any time you need the police, they're there. It's a price you have to pay. The base service is allocated among the municipalities on an equal-per-property basis, and the one ninety-one thirty-five per property as of 2018. So, move on to calls for service. This is the cost of municipal reactive calls. So, this is allocated based on their usage. So, your crime calls, your provincial statutes, your MBCs, your general calls for service. Calls for service are charged to the municipality according to their usage, okay? So, you pay a percentage. The other costs include your overtime, court security, dedicated enhancements, cleaning, caretaking. These are allocated directly to the municipality based on contact avoidance and usage. So, for example, you wanted enhancement, so you wanted a specific FTE in your municipality full-time, that's what we call an enhancement, that's charged just to your municipality separate. So, that's where the OPPE comes up with the four hundred and three, so this number here is for the 2018 cost recovery, so four hundred million dollars is recovered. Break it down even further. So, the billing model is provincially focused and divides the majority of the municipal policing costs into two categories. So, you have your base services, your calls for service. So, your base services, as I said before, they're your proactive, so your ride, your traffic safety, community policing, your intelligence gathering. This is training of officers and administrative duties. This is a hundred percent of all the inspectors and staff sergeant positions and legislative activities, so the crime prevention, officer availability, and the fact that you can call an officer twenty-four, twenty-four-seven. Calls for service allocates the cost to municipality based on their individual usage. So, these are your crime calls. So, anytime police actually, you pick up the phone and you call a police officer and they're attending. So, crime calls, provincial statutes, whether it's mental health, trespass to property, landlord-tenant disputes, your motor vehicle collision, general calls for service, and then in addition to that is your additional cost, so overtime, as I just said, enhancements, court security, all of that is on top. So, base services. Total recoveries for base services is independent of the number of properties and is calculated based on the number of officers required to provide base services. So, we've gone over a number of activities that would include base services. So, your proactive policing, crime prevention, administrative duties, general and direct patrol, your training of officers. The total cost of the base services is then allocated among municipalities on an equal-per-property basis using MPAC data. So, these are examples here of what is included and not included in your property count. So, included is your household, so residential, commercial, and industrial. Not included is vacant land, so farmland and managed forest, forest with no households, households, commercial and industrial properties on Canadian forest basis. So, what has changed? So, OREGs 26714 had some amendments, and what it did was it excluded five thousand three hundred and thirty properties from the 2016 year-end property counts. And the reason for this was a lot of municipalities had gone to MPAC and said, these should not be included. So, things such as wind turbines, solar facilities, structures that there's really rarely any interaction with the public, tunnel bridge, federal provincial parks. So, those were changed. And what impact now does it have on the OPPE? Well, it was a decrease. So, because of excluding these properties, there's now a point, zero point four seven percent decrease in the property count. However, with approximately seventy percent of municipalities experiencing less than two thousand dollar increase or decrease in their overall cost, so there wasn't a substantial financial increase or decrease. So, calls for service. So, these costs represents costs related to your reactive policing. So, you pick up the phone, you need a police officer, they're coming. These are your calls for service. Municipalities will be billed for the actual number and type of reactive calls for service. So, a municipality pays a proportionate share of the total municipal reactive calls for service costs. So, the costs are based on time standards that apply to a four-year average call for service to determine the total weighted hours of calls for service. So, the next couple of slides are just to give you a quick description of what some additional costs could be. So, overtime, the municipalities are billed for overtime from occurrences in their geographical area, and a portion of their detachment overtime not linked to a specific municipality, so training, administrative duties. Overtime recoveries are limited to municipal detachment staff, and it excludes overtime incurred for provincial obligations. For court security, so municipalities that have a court in their jurisdiction are responsible for the provision and cost of court security activities, and this is required under the Police Service Act. Municipalities that do not have a court in the municipalities are not charged for court Prisoner transportation, the total cost of providing prisoner transportation across the province is determined based on the cost of provincial FTEs, providing service allocated to all municipalities on an equal-per-property basis. Accommodation and cleaning, these charges do not apply to municipalities that provide their own accommodation or cleaning to services for an OPPE detachment, and the municipal portion of the cost, which is the own detachment facilities, is allocated to municipalities on an equal-per-property basis. Dedicated enhancements, so that's what I was speaking about earlier. So, if you're on a Section 10 contract with the OPPE, municipalities may choose to have a dedicated enhanced service, so an additional civilian or uniform FTE to do a specific task in your municipality. These positions would typically be contracted for a dedicated purpose, and municipalities are responsible for the full cost of work provided to them by dedicated positions. Okay, so year-end adjustments. So, overtime salary, benefit rates, court security, your prisoner transportation, and enhanced costs are estimated in the annual billing statements issued each fall for the following year. So, adjustments for costs that are reconciled after the year of service is complete will be included as a prior year adjustment in the next annual billing statement that's issued. So, for example, the 2018 year-end adjustment will be included in the 2020 annual billing statement. Adjustments will be included in annual billing statements issued in the fall. So, here is a 2018 cost recovery breakdown. So, the cost for the base services and calls for service is calculated by applying the actual salaries, benefits, and municipal cost recovery formulas, so the support and equipment, to the applicable FTEs. So, 2018 municipal recoveries, so the twenty-one fifty-two uniform FTEs and one hundred and ninety-one civilian FTEs, so excluding the enhancements, court security, prisoner transporting, cleaning stuff. This is just kind of a snapshot, just to show you the total municipal policing cost and the average cost per property. So, it just kind of shows you that it stays kind of even, even over the years, starting in 2014 all the way to 2018. So, in 2014, the average was paying three hundred and fifty-six dollars per property, and right now we're paying three hundred and fifty-five dollars per property. This again is just for your own purpose. You can look at this when you leave here, just to kind of go through it. It's just the OPPE municipal billing snapshot. So, it just kind of tells you, shows you 2015 reconciled all the way up to 2018 estimates. So, it just is able to show you how close the prices are. And as you can see, so in 2015, we're actually paying two hundred and ninety-one dollars per property, and in 2018, we're down to one ninety-one thirty-five for base services. And here, it shows you that increase of the forty dollars, the phase-in that I was talking about earlier. So, it's just something for you guys to take a look at. So, some helpful online resources for you, so on the internet, the www.opp.ca, if you go under the billing model, or municipal policing, or contract disposal, it'll give you all the information that you need. It'll give you this presentation. It'll also give you some, any documentation that you need. If it doesn't, please contact me, I will get anything for you. We do have a Twitter account, that you can see anything going on with the municipal Police Bureau through Twitter. And some other helpful resources is our annual billing statement webinar. So, this is organized for municipalities, OPPE police, police, and existing and aspiring detachment commanders. And that is it. So, we welcome questions, and Linda and I were happy to answer anything.
I'll talk over questions. Go ahead, Ken.
Enhancements. Can you go with the basic models we're speaking, add enhancements after?
Yes.
Okay, I think we are, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
My one question. Everything else was pretty self-explanatory. The billing model, will it be adjusting our enhancements, or are we providing those off the top of our heads? Because you have a billing, like, a billing model, but you also have a...
Base model.
The building, I said building, I meant billing.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that model, like, after three-plus years?
Yes. So, the transition contract, after three-plus years, and you roll into the billing model?
Right.
Yes?
Well, you have already known what our enhancement should be at that point?
It's up to you guys. So, you guys tell us what you want as enhancements, but yes, so if you choose at that point, yes, it will be rolled in.
Okay, because I heard, I think it was Bill that said, that you guys have some sort of a database you keep on, is that right? of a database you keep on, is that right? Okay.
Like DARs?
What type of database is for? We have lots of databases. Yeah.
We're the OPP.
Yeah, exactly. That was a little vague. I guess mostly for the...
Calls for service?
Yes.
So our daily activity reporting system?
Yes.
Calculates all of our calls for service?
Okay.
And the time spent on each?
On each.
Yep.
So that would give you some sort of an idea as to what this town would require?
Absolutely, which is why we need that three-plus years?
Yes.
To calculate that data and be able to roll you into a certain number once you get into the billing model.
Right. So it would be an average-type system, I guess, at that point?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, our community has what they call UCR reporting, and it's the same type of database as the OPP.
Yep.
So we, one of the, one of the tools that you've given the community, if I understand, is a, is a spreadsheet where we can put our calls for service data into there, match up with the codes, and do an estimate. Is that fair to say?
Yes, for calls for service.
Yeah.
That does not include the base services or the additional. Yep.
Heather?
Our building right now, where our police station is, when we, when it's brought up to standards?
Yep.
And you take it over, it's still our responsibility, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, under the calls for service, I saw you said something, percentage, and you looked at all the municipalities?
Yes.
And then you did a percentage of all the municipalities?
Yes.
And then is that where you set the amount of calls per service roughly for each municipality? How does that work?
So you take all the calls for service across the province for every municipality that we police, and you pay your percentage of that. So for, I don't even have to example it. I can show you where you probably understand it more if I can show you a percentage, but...
I think it was 11,500 or something.
Actually, yeah, if you go to this slide.
Yep.
So you figure a total cost of those 11 million, and then whatever percentage we are is billed according to that?
Yes.
So it's not necessarily what you did?
No.
Okay.
It's a percentage.
It's an average.
It's an average percent. Yes.
It's a percent of all the calls in all the...
Correct.
In the middle.
Yeah. Municipalities only, though, not provincial calls.
That's right.
No, no.
So would be fair to say that if on average, the average break and enter, I'll call it operational one or two, was 4.2 hours across the province, because it might represent 5,000 break and enters, which use so much time. If your community has a break and enter, you pay that, the average, no matter how long it took?
Yes. No, not necessarily. Let me, I want to go back to this slide.
Go back to this slide. The slide with all the numbers that nobody can read.
Oh, go down one. No, right there.
Would that be part of the rebate?
So the way it basically works is that slide with all the numbers shows our annual So when we're billing municipalities, it's on a cost recovery basis, and we don't know how much policing we're going to do in your town in the year to come. So the estimate is prepared. And the estimate is prepared in this very first column that, which one is...
Does that work?
No.
No.
Does it turn on?
You have lots of luck with this. So this column...
There we go.
This column right here is how much money we're going to recover from the municipalities based on the amount of officers we have working in the municipality. And then we use the data in our daily activity reporting system, because it tells us where the officers worked and for how long they worked there. So we determine how much time they spend in total doing base services versus how much time they spend doing calls for service. So in 2008, for 2018, it's following around a 60%, 40% split. It's actually a little bit less than that. It's about 57% versus 43%. So when we look at this column, and that that's the money we want to recover here at the bottom, is the 395 million or whatever that is down there, 57% of it is going to be recovered by the base services, and the other 40x amount is going to be recovered from the calls for service. So whatever that value is right there, it's approximately $145 million. When it comes to the calls for service, that's how much we need to recover from that workload. And when we look at all of the hours that were applied for all the calls for all of the 323 municipalities, those hours, which we calculated using the time standards, make 100% and equals 145 million. So if you have 3% of the calls, which a town like Espinola would never have, it would probably be something like .504% or something like that, they'll pay .504% of the 145 million.
Okay.
So it's not really like each, each call's going to be 4.2 hours, it's going to be calculated at that, but then your percentage of total hours is going to be the same percentage of that 145 million.
By the amount of calls, though?
By the, it's, it's basically weighted hours.
Within the community?
Right.
Right. Okay.
I guess that's a point I was making, okay? Let's say if, let's say operational, operational items are 3.5 hours.
Right.
If we have 10 operational calls for the year, you charge us for 35 hours, 3.5 times 10 for the year.
Well, calculated as 35 hours.
Yes.
Yes. That's correct.
So, and it might, maybe the community had the officers for those 10 calls engage for 40 hours or for 20 hours, but you sort of averaged that out across the province and charge it at three and a half hours.
Correct.
So your call even...
It may have taken two hours.
Yeah.
It may have taken seven hours.
But you get charged for that same amount.
That's right.
Based on what it typically would be across the province.
Right, that's the average time standard to investigate that type of call.
Yeah.
Correct.
This does not affect our initial cost proposal? Like, we began this, we submitted a cost proposal for us?
Yes.
Now, everything that you've talked about on this is over and above?
Everything about this is not part of the transition contract, which is what you would enter into. We presented you with a proposal that's a transition contract that is based on staffing. So it's based on a certain number of what we call full-time equivalents or FTEs. We need to go into that transition contract for several reasons initially. As at the end of that contract, you will no longer be based on your FTEs, you will be billed based on the billing model. So this is after the transition contract.
So after the transition contract, we're going to pay more for any extra service or anything like that?
No, 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 it's just, it's a completely different methodology.
Okay.
The first three years is being billed based on actual staffing, not about the base and calls for service.
Okay.
And as we collect that data, when you go into year four, then that's when you will, instead of being billed by FTEs or the number of officers, you will then be billed on the base and calls for service strictly. No staffing component as part of that.
And then when does cost recovery come into play? Like you, you're going to, we have a proposal, we're going to have calls for service, and then we're going to pay for those?
No, no. Right now, for the billing model, you will strictly pay for the, for the hours. The calls will not be related. It's strictly for the staffing for the first three years.
No, it's going to be, it's not adjusted.
It's all included.
It's going to stay just the way it is right now.
For transition.
For the transition. Three-plus years ago, we're going to go to this after.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that's what they're saying, right?
Essentially, the difference is, is that one is billed by the number of officers you have, and the other one is billed more by the workload.
Right.
Regardless of how many officers you have. But we have to go into the transition contract first for several reasons. First of all, we're obligated to take on all members in good standing from your police service, whether it's enough or whether it's not enough. And if our allocation says that this town needs 10 officers, but you currently have 15, we still are obligated to take over those 15 officers, and the town would be paying for those 15 officers for the first three years. At the end of the transition contract, regardless of how many officers you have, you will be billed based on your number of properties and your volume of calls for service. So the two billing models are completely different, but a lot of municipalities are concerned about how, what will their bill look like in year four?
Yeah.
And this is basically how it will be calculated in year four.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? I've heard one.
Three-plus years because we're starting part and we threw a year.
Yes, so...
And so it's three full years after whatever part we're in.
If you made your decision in May to say yes, that's your plus until December 31st.
Now during that transition three-year period, we've got that transition price. And I know, whatever you call your system, DAR or whatever, where you know where the officers are. Our officers now are two per shift. If during that transition, one of those officers, because they're not municipal officers then, you're OPP. They're out doing something, and then the other, they come back when needed and whatever. Will our price drop? I thought they had told us yes, I just want to clear.
You...
Because if they're not both in town all the time, and there's billing model in the transition, I think it's based on that.
Through the transition, what you're saying, here, three-plus years.
So we are definitely paying for staffing in the transition model contract. But what that means is we're committed to providing you 1,417 hours per FTE.
But if he's out of the municipality, then that's deducted.
But it's not, it's not calculated on a daily basis. So they may not be in the municipality as much today as they are in the municipality tomorrow.
So there will be no change in those three-plus years?
We would still, if we are taking, say, 10 officers, then that means we would be committed to providing you with 14,000 hours of policing, whether or not, like within the community.
It's only after the transition that we will be billed. If there's only one officer here for so many hours, we only billed that.
After the transition, it's no longer...
No.
Based on that. So it's, it's, it's hard, it's, it's, the FTEs are, should be equated more in terms of hours of service.
Okay.
And so for every full-time officer we get, we're committed, that we have in your municipality, rather than saying there's going to be two people here or three people here on every single shift, we guarantee that we will provide 1,417 hours per officer. And if we do not, at the end of the year, there'll be a reconciliation.
Okay.
Where if, if we get, live up to that, to those hours, then you would get credited for that. Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Not three, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Special meeting of council here by adjourned. All favor. Harry.
Yes.